I want to ask Mr. Williams to do our prayer and Mr. Richards to do our prayers. Mr. Williams?
Dear Lords, we come together here tonight, we want to thank you for this day that you've blessed us with. Thank you for allowing us all to still be able to come outside of life. And I want, at this time, thank you for the good share of Rainy that we got him home last night. And as we, as board members, come before this body to do the business this soon, we'd ask for your leadership. I'd ask you to help us all to always keep our most prized thoughts toward our children and what is best for them. And we'd ask you to be with each and every one that stands in need at this time, with sick and afflicted, and help us all to look to you for what will stand in need. We ask that you, here, to make the difference.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Are any challenges or updates to the agenda?
I'd like to add, underneath third, senior board members, you had a place for thinking on that spot.
Any questions? You have a motion to approve the agenda as we change? Mr. Williams makes that, you have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams says, in discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Yes.
Have you had a chance to read the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? I'll make the motion. Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. School financial statements and general fund microrecognition and bills and accounts. We have a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Richards, Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. All those, the papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Budget amendment. Mr. Cump, would you go over there?
All right. Here in the year when you have different funds come in later after the original deadline, you have to do an official budget amendment, and sometimes you do two, sometimes you do one. This year, we're only going to do this one. We have some money added at the federal level, carryover funds. First, the federal government gives most federal programs in the next twelve months. They call it carryover, went to prior year financials that are set. The balance should have remained in carryover. We just need to get that money approved to spend. And then the career tag, the state level is career tag, extended contracts. Two different contracts there, the two of our actresses apply for, what we would. We added that to it. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Mr. Taylor, does your recommendation?
Yes.
Mr. Williams. Chief Sergeant, Mr. Taylor makes recommendations, have a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Mr. Shaw, do you have your microphone on?
I can't hear you.
Do you have your microphone on?
Not very loud. Can you hear? I'm seeing things.
We've got a couple of bids for doing this separately. Ms. Clinton has soft bids for child nutrition program for milk and orange juice products. I actually had someone call me today on the Mayfield, not the milk bank, so I think they'll be taking to get these bids in. They were open at 10:00 on June 21st. Bids were sent to Mayfield Dairy, Boarding Dairy, and Metal Gold Dairy. Mayfield submitted the lowest bid at $245,178.61, so I'd like to recommend approval of that bid.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
I would accept the recommendation.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
I'll say.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Got a bid on ice cream. Ms. Clinton opened the bid at 10:30 on June 21st. The bid was sent to Mayfield Boarding and Metal Gold again. And Mayfield submitted the only bid on the ice cream. And the bid that was sent to Metal Gold was returned to the mail and Boarding Dairy did not submit a bid. So I'd like to recommend the approval of the bid by Mayfield to be accepted.
You've heard the recommendation on the bid, we have a motion to approve. Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. All right, you went through those all together.
I recommend Amanda, under resignations, retirements, and other deals. Amanda Martin, elementary teacher, Crossville Elementary resignation. Keith Collin, secondary history teacher, Collinsville resignation. Shima Daniel, intervention teacher, Plainview resignation. Hattie Bryant, junior varsity cheerleader, Ider, coaching duties only. Kelly Bryson, school nurse at Plainview.
All right, Chief Sergeant, recommendation on these resignations, retirements, and other deals, we have a motion to approve. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Police vaxines.
I recommend that we allow leave absence for any down secondary science, Spanish history, drill day, effective eight more.
You've heard the recommendation, we have a motion to approve leave absence.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Transfers.
I'd like to recommend Pamela Clark, transfer CFP worker by head to CFP worker at Plainview.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend transfer Alexa Williams, elementary teacher at Crossville Middle to elementary teacher at Crossville Elementary.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Aye.
We've heard show vote for votes for it, Mr. Peppers abstaining.
I recommend transfer Ms. Amy Graham from itinerant instructional coach to secondary language teacher at Savannah.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend transfer Jennifer Gilbert, elementary teacher at Jolene to itinerant DL teacher at Jolene.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Give that to Mr. Peppers. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend this transfer of Ms. Michelle Barnes, elementary teacher at Collinsville to elementary teacher at Allen.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Peppers, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend transfer Ms. Kendra Barnum, CFP worker at Collinsville to pre-K auxiliary at Crossville Middle.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. What's a pre-K auxiliary?
She's a A.
Oh.
It's pre-K.
Good question. Any other discussion? All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend transfer Ms. Bryn Gore, itinerant specially paraprofessional at Crossville Elementary to itinerant high school specially teacher, five special services.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Angela Barber, specially bus aid and Ida's special services to itinerant specially paraprofessional and Ida's special services.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Karen Owens, itinerant specially pre-K aid to itinerant specially paraprofessional and five go teach.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers, I mean, yeah, those papers out. Y'all got them mixed up. Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Kelly Lee, secondary language arts in Enger to secondary language arts in Savannah.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend the transfer of Mr. Chase Parker, secondary science teacher at Crossville Middle to secondary science teacher at Plainview.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Joy Stanford, itinerant specially, specially paraprofessional and special services to itinerant specially paraprofessional and five pre-K.
All right, we have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards, motion, second. Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Question?
I'll place Mr. Mike King background view, make so guilty criteria, negative report, gross flipping, and appropriate certification. I'd like to recommend Ms. Kayla Hawken, elementary teacher at Crossville Elementary.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers, you have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Ms. Tori Gilbert, pre-K teacher at Crossville Middle.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Ms. Angela Peak, elementary teacher at Crossville Middle.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Give that to Mr. Williams. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Ms. Kelly Haber, elementary teacher at White.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Ms. Brittany Gray, pre-K teacher at Crossville Middle.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Miles Keefe, intervention teacher at Crossville High.
Chief Sergeant, the recommendation, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Frank Posey, secondary history teacher at Crossville High.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Georgiana Crisson, secondary language arts teacher at Crossville High.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion? Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Mally Grayson, elementary teacher, five.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. Mr. Peppers, second. In discussion. All those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Hannah Rhodes, elementary teacher at Jolene.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams, second. In discussion.
Disagreement, recommendation, Mr. Congress?
Sure is.
Okay.
Like to get a good one.
Yes, we can really get it. Those papers, those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
I recommend Mr. Jeremy Slatten, secondary science five.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Sheree Williams, family and silver science teacher, five.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
This?
Mr. Peppers, second. Discussion.
Recommendation of Sheree, Mr. Pronto, Stewie, and yesterday.
Any other discussion? All right, those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Aye.
All right, let's break the show vote, so four, four one, pass. Next.
Recommend Mr. Chris Healy, welding instructor at Kent County Career Tech Center.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. No discussion? Just recommendation that we?
Question?
Is on. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye?
Aye.
We've heard show vote, Phil.
I recommend Ms. Shastis Scott, CFP worker at Collinsville.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Ms. Tammy Mountain, post driver at Crossville Elementary.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Bobby Brown, nine hundred assistant custodian at Crossville Elementary.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Robbie Ferguson, twoman custodian at Ider.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion? So, Mr. Williams, makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Linda Tetter, pre-K auxiliary at Crossville Middle.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Peppers makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend Tiffany Halfaker, itinerant specially bus aid, five special services.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Richards, Mr. Peppers, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Recommend VTP ship, itinerant specially paraprofessional, five special services.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. All right, we're all, can I probably not touch the samples yet?
I'd recommend the following. Holly Curry, varsity, and JV girls basketball coach at Alanya. Josh Clements, assistant football coach, Savannah. Dustin Dalton, junior high girls and boys basketball, and junior high volleyball coach, Savannah. Frank Posey, assistant football coach, Crossville High. Miles Keith, assistant football coach, Crossville High.
Chief Sergeant, recommendation, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion. Mr. Peppers, second. In discussion. Are y'all discussing things with that many?
Yeah, we are.
All right. We have a motion, second, and we have a call for the vote. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Y'all want to do all the contracts? Let's just do, let's do A to V together, and then do the F seven.
Okay, all right. First, A three, you're all specially. I'd like to recommend unit contract. Herbist Ian, Juanee Gilan, psychometrist assistant. Cam Dover, summer services. Gina Green, summer services. Karen Owen, summer services. Amanda Woodall, summer services. IDKV.
Chief Sergeant, the recommendation, have a motion? Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
I recommend contract for Mr. Dale Tyree as a mechanic. We were a little bit shorthanded, and Mr. Anderson would ask. Like they were trying to give buses inspected and several men, we were out of sight of cross location. He was down about the end of brand new employee, and we had just hired him up before, so Dale was retired.
Yeah.
Mechanic, and he asked if we could get some help to like some of those guys, he didn't make it, so that's what that contract is.
Chief, you've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
I guess it's a contract.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. All right, those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Go ahead and do all the common workers together.
April Hughes, Collinsville, Melissa Smith, Collinsville, Hill Corner, Crossville Middle, Pam Bryant, Crossville High. Alec Burgess, five. Raul, Aravalo, Geraldine, Nicholas Fleischer. Geraldine, Hillary Clark, Enger, Angela Barber, Ider, Tammy Smith, Ider, Crimson Long, Moonlake, Garrett Hall, Plainview, Ben Williamson, Plainview, Vincent Mason, Rahama, Zach Hart, Sylvania, Zach Maddox, Sylvania, Byron Hanes, Valleyhead, Tim Turner, the Tech Center, Austin Staple, Facilities, and Ethan Wilburn, Valleyhead.
Chief Sergeant, the recommendations, all the summer workers, have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Give that to Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion. Y'all want to do the separate, they're together.
I recommend the following principal contracts. State Street, Geraldine, twelve months. Wesley Kim, Savannah, twelve months. Ricky Ryan, five, twelve months. Stacy Green, Enger, eleven months.
Chief Sergeant, the recommendation, have a motion? Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams makes a second. In discussion.
These are current, up to date, like they've all been?
Well, we're trying to, there's some votes that expired. We're trying to give all their life July, and we're simply going to try to give the next batch so we can renew them all at the same time. Some of them just kind of longer than time, different times of the year. If we were to have turnover of the principals, we'd like for that to happen in June so we could hire somebody in July for retirements or non-renewals, that type of thing. So we feel like July is the best time to do that, so.
As far as the money amount, no?
Oh, yeah, the money's all the same as it was.
I do like the July to June. I think I'll directly July to June. I know me and Brian talked about that, getting all July to June. I know we've also talked about those principal contracts, the new, new pay system for those, and we're still working on that.
All right, in discussion.
You're saying these contracts are the very same as contracts like that before?
They are, because just renewals.
You have a question?
Yeah, I was thinking Mr. Stray's contract was over. First time around.
It was before.
I understand, but this, but this one's going back to the regular principle, the regular schedule we have. I mean, the regular record that we have now.
It reflects his last contract, is that not correct?
How come to Mr. Bryant's it's the same? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Well, I guess the bottom line, we're not cutting Mr. Stray's pay right this way. Totally against that.
Any other discussion?
Is that, I mean, is that something we, you know, we kicked around the chains and the contracts to?
We had talked about like a little bit, picture salary, and do some of it is based on enrollment classification. And I think that's some of the things that if, you know, at some point we can get to the point where we rely on all that based off enrollment figures. That would be particularly, that would be what would be to fix that. Some man had problems and things that we've kind of been looking over, patch mount. I think that's probably a good fix, because it would reflect the amount of responsibility and work we've had to be able to do it all and package it.
Any other discussion? I'm confident with those, those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye?
Aye.
Okay, let me count, one, two, four, one, two, yes, I look forward to passage. Motion.
We've got a few policy things we need to go over real quick. One that we need to lay on the table for thirty days, discussing the opening of school policy. We like for that to read, and all Kent County schools will open the doors for students and begin unloading buses at least twenty-five minutes before starting time of school day. And not all the schools open at the same time. So what we're trying to do is just to make sure that whatever time they start, that these two are having time to get off the bus, get to the locker, or get to the classroom, and have time to go eat breakfast. So we're just trying to find some uniformity within the system. They start at seven forty, just back there twenty-five minutes, make sure the buses are loaded, have time to give a man some time to eat.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, have a motion?
That's a table.
Oh, okay. Yes.
We'll bring that up next July. Okay. Do you want to discuss these individually, or do you want to do them all together, through comments, like we made? Item B is the do not resuscitate policy, and we're trying to remove the word "that" so it reflects state law. Item C is the hundred point rating limit. What we've got there is if we may have a teacher at one school giving bonus points, and a child being able to earn one hundred fifteen points in a semester, so we're saying a hundred is the top. We still give bonus points for extra work for those kids who may need it or want to earn and do that, and we're saying let's stop it at a hundred, because a hundred's supposed to be perfect score. So we're trying to stop some of this unlimited, let's give them one hundred fifty, eight hundred twenty points, that kind of thing.
I like Zed even saying a bad name.
Also, the private road policy, that is laid on the table for thirty days. The CFP professional development standards, we'd like to adopt those. The sexual abuse policy, and data governance policy are some things we can, any questions we can discuss. And then the rankings and honors policy, you know, we had a pretty big discussion in May about that. One item that we would like to finalize is the change in the calculation from the, at Christmas time, or the end of the third week to the end of school, until the fourth week break period. Which puts a little bit of work on the counselors, but we're trying to fix some of our problems. If that had been in place, our problem with Ider and Geraldine wouldn't have happened. Some of the kids tend to not only take those advanced courses because they can't be very competitive without a tournament, slip for a top ten, because they don't know when they're going to get their grades back. And the fact that some kids may not take any hard classes, or they may shut down after Christmas because they think their grades are all in, and they're not even trying to stay past. So we're trying to make them finish out strong. So those policies are all up for adoption at this time.
All right, let's go ahead and get a motion for a second, we'll have a little discussion of those. Have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. All right, discussion. Looks at the DNR policy, in my understanding, that's just basically what state policy is, so there's no change there. The hundred point rating limit has nothing to do with weighted averages or anything like that, it's just saying you can't have more than a hundred points. Mr. Peppers, you have any questions about private road policy? How that affect your area?
Just hopefully there's a, keep them on track, and keep the roads maintained, and all that, just hope this.
I think it's a good, a good change. CFP professional. I don't really have any other issues with the, so. All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we get a motion? Call for a vote. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. I have a motion.
Okay. May I permission to approve the CFP produce and bread bids coming in?
Chief Sergeant, the recommendation on that? So that's just going to come in sometime before, before next meeting? Do we have a motion for? Mr. Richards makes a motion. Mr. Williams, second. In discussion. Those papers out?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye?
I'm not sure we're able to.
Okay.
Clarification on that, hashtag twenty-six, name dash one ninety-eight, pay raise. It's very good. There was some confusion and the lack of knowledge at the last meeting when we had that discussion. The four percent pay raise will apply to all support and certified staff, just want to make that clear.
Thank you, you're welcome.
You will.
I'm honored to have you.
Yeah. Student lunch price increase will go from a dollar ninety to two dollars. We'd like to make that recommendation.
Chief Sergeant, the recommendation, have a motion? Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams? Mr. Wood, seconds, in discussion. Those papers say it. Uh, opposed, Matt, I'll say most here's.
I'd like to recommend student rate, this price increase from a dollar five to a dollar ten.
All right, we have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, seconds, in discussion. Those papers say it. Uh, opposed, Matt, I'll say most here's.
I'd like to ask for permission to place the order approval, we've got a few positions that may need to be ten month positions. I'll certainly give the press force to make sure that we have recommendations, and if you guys have that permission, we'll make support.
All right, chief, you've heard his request, we have a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richard makes a motion. Uh, Mr. Wood, seconds, in discussion. Those papers say it. Uh, opposed, Matt, I'll say most here's. All right, the A S P dues, uh, that is, uh, S D is, is, uh, is due every year for this, for the board members. As we have a, that's, I guess, the, the board makes that decision, so we don't, for those needs, we know she's a good one, but. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
All right, Richard, seconds, discussion, those papers say it. Uh, opposed, Matt, I'll say most here's. All right. I guess, what we, Mr. Pepper, you go ahead and do your part now.
I'd like to propose that we go into executive session to discuss the good name and character of the employee.
All right, uh, get that form of motion, we have a second. Mr. Richard, seconds, in discussion. But I guess, those papers say it. Uh, opposed, Matt, I'll say most here's. It is, it is. Okay, I'm ten next. Late night into the meeting. Uh, does any other board members have any, any issues about this report? All right, uh, I'm the E A.
I was just trying to say, um, thank you for looking at the policy about, of starting times, that everyone will have an opportunity to eat breakfast, and thank you for allowing us to be here.
One, one thing I was going to ask in advance, what? I, I know some of the schools start like at, uh, seven forty-five, and it was a problem that, that some of the schools were, I guess, not opening until maybe fifteen minutes or so before school starts.
Well, it wasn't at what time they were open, it's what time the buses were in line. That was really what was happening, that some of them, school may start at seven forty, but buses are like that at seven thirty, seven twenty-five, they're, they're having time to participate in, uh, morning breakfast, so. Whatever time they start, whatever they choose, for that, the principal and counselor and those folks want to set their schedule for the start time, we just want to make sure there's ample time provided, so that, um, the CFP can provide them lunch, and breakfast.
Anything else? Okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank you for allowing us to reach these points. And I'm glad that y'all got the letters stating that this raise was for us. I knew that it was, but, uh, you know, I wouldn't argue, I just let it come from a better source. And, uh, since you give a, a raise to all these other people, other local funds, uh, if you look at, uh, support people, we have maybe two dozen, that makes thirty thousand or more a year. So if you would give the two percent that you gave these other people, if you match that amount, you could give most, every support person a raise of four percent from other funds, plus four percent that is allocated. We really thought the legislature would give this four percent, and I was just really shocked today, and when I thought, Lord, are we going to have to fight our superintendent level war too? So, you know, we don't want to have to do that, but we would like for you to look at this. I do thank you for giving the Luttrell Ladies the raise, and have you overlooked the state case, have you forgotten about that? I'd like for you to continue to look at that, thank you.
Letters we got, had everybody's number of years on you.
That's fine. I can play here.
All right, the day of next meeting is twenty-sixth, July, six P M. We got to six P M for.
The lock.
Yeah. All right, uh, we have a motion to the general. Motion to the general, but Mr. Wood, second. Mr. Wood, second. Those papers say it.